I'll call this workshop as Jacksonville City Council or Council Coffee to the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting and entertain a motion to adopt that agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Are you in all in favor of signature by the Senate?
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Blitzer, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. We have a number of staff people here this evening because the workshop item is intended to present to you and to the public a documentary that shows the Hurricane Florence from the time it was formed through today. I think you'll find that the next hour and 20 minutes is going to be very beneficial to you. We do notice that there are some citizens in the room who are probably from the shoreline area. This meeting is not specifically about shoreline. We are setting up a public meeting and send out notices to shoreline residents. I believe it's going to be Wednesday of this coming week?
It's going to be Thursday the 29th, 5:00 to 7:00 here in City Hall.
Okay, so Thursday of next week, from 5:00 to 7:00 here in City Hall. Will it be in City Council chambers?
Well, it may be in multiple locations. We haven't set that up yet. But it's provide, answer questions and provide information about the hazardous grant mitigation program as well as what the code requirements pertaining to reconstruction for units on shoreline, you know, what some of the process involved in doing that.
Okay. You're certainly, we would encourage the public to stay, but if you came specifically thinking this was to talk about shoreline, then that meeting is still a week away. The other thing that we would mention is that in the presentation this evening, there will be multiple staff persons who will be involved. This is not a presentation by the manager. As you can appreciate, a storm of the magnitude of Florence was not only an impact and involved every person in our community, it involved every staff member. So we want the staff members to be available to tell you the story from their perspective, and I think you will find it to be quite eye-opening. We're very fortunate tonight that at a point in the presentation, we will have comments from FEMA. Those comments will again, though, be general comments. They're not designed to answer specific questions. And again, in workshop setting, the public is invited to listen, but by council rules, this is not a dialogue with the public. This is your opportunity to receive information. There is one point in the presentation, though, where you will hear recommendations from the city manager. And for the public who is here, I want them to know that in order for the FEMA program to move forward relative to shoreline or any property that's going to be impacted through the FEMA program relative to purchase or any of the elevation mitigation, those type things, City Council has to agree that we will be a participant. You will hear that later in the area. The city is not buying property. We've said that to the residents from the beginning. However, in order for the federal government to buy the property, the city has to agree to be part of the process, and you will hear the steps as again, they will be reviewed with the public a week away on Thursday evening. So we appreciate the FEMA folks and the SBA folks who are with us this evening. Also, I've asked the staff, as public come in, if we need to ask staff to step out so that they can have a seat. Some staff members will be stepping out. Again, when you talk about Hurricane Florence, we're going to really begin with the actual formation. I'm going to ask Sean and Jerry to come up and present this part of the program. Gentlemen?
Mayor, Council, thank you all for having us here this afternoon talking about hurricane. We'll start with an overview of the storm. Of course, you see the satellite imagery of how large the storm was before it moved on to our coastline. Originally began on Monday the 10th as a category four with a target towards North Carolina. You can see the actual tracking of the storm and the dates and times. Then on Tuesday, the county issued a mandatory evacuation for unincorporated areas, and the mayor went live at 3:00 PM. And there's a track of the storm at that time. At 8:00 AM, all key staff had a meeting at the EOC. We went over the basic operations of the EOC, what were the expectations. Mayor and some council members were there at the time. We basically outlined when the EOC would operate and the duration of the storm. There it is again. Started moving closer and closer. There was our meeting prior to it. 8:00 AM, we did a level one activation. That means all departments were activated at that time in the EOC. We have representatives of all city departments. It was going to be staffed 24 hours a day, so, you know, during the direction of the storm. We had, we had that time at 24 miles per hour. It started moving closer and closer to the coast. It started losing its strength, which is great. Went down from four down to category one, category two at the time. You can see we put a curfew in effect for Jacksonville at that time, beginning of what mayor probably, 7:00 AM in the afternoon?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM?
Yeah. 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
During that time, we actually had a fire over here at one point in time before the beginning of the storm, one of the apartment complexes. We had some small limbs and tree debris in the roadway at the time on College Street. You can see, starting to see some damage down there at Bell Fork Road and Country Club where the church's chickens at. Florence made landfall. It actually made landfall in rifle beach as a category one hurricane with sustained winds of 90. We actually had winds sustained gust of 81 miles an hour with 54 mile an hour steady. And at that time, our river was at 1.5 feet above flood. Like you see right now, it's finally on top of us. Actually went down south of us, which is a good thing. During the height of storm, we did lose the roof on the triangle end of one of the complexes there. We rescued approximately 60-plus individuals out of the building at that time. We actually ended up having to house them due to emergency shelter being up in the Center for Public Safety. We provided them with shirts and blankets, whatever we had to keep making as comfortable as possible. Just another photo of how it was a sad situation that they had to be brought into our building because of the damage to the triangle motor end. We did utilize transportation buses, same thing as the prisons, to help move the patients from there, I mean, the actual victims from there to an open shelter at that point in Then the flooding came. The winds were bad enough, but then flooding and the water rescues continued. At 9:00 AM, tropical force winds end, but rain continues. The river exceeded five feet at this time. We did have the Coast Guard here affecting rescues throughout the city and the county for people that are on top of roofs of their houses. You can see Riverwalk Marina pretty much inundated with water. When the wind pushed in from the coast, it pushed the water back up the river, causing the flooding along this area in the Shoreline Drive area. People waiting for food, Monsters Pizza seemed to be the only one that had power at the Of course, we had food here at the Center for Public Safety. We were trying to feed all responders, fire police. Of course, we had Gold Crowd was our great supplier of our food for us. The Operations Center worked 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. I mean, we were in there the whole time. We got briefings from the county also. We've seen brief from the county as well as the mayor gave briefings on a daily basis, morning and afternoon. Florence rainfall totals. National Weather Service said we had 24.61 official inches. New River Station was down. One mile northwest of Jacksonville, they got 30.65. We did some averages, calculations, thanks to Kevin Riappell. It came with average of about 33 inches of rain during the storm. River elevation peaked a little bit above seven feet at the height of the storm. The rains lessened, the river crested 7.27 feet. Luckily, our river begins and ends in Onslow County, so we don't have a lot of water inundated from other communities pushing into our area. As you can see, Court Street completely flooded. Poplar Street, all this is locally downtown. Spargo Street, all in the same basic area right now, down there at the end of Court Tree limbs, trees were down, power lines were down, communication lines were down. Of course, the marina again sustained quite a bit of damage. Jackal Landing, luckily the docks do float there. Cheney Heights, down off of River View. 5:00 PM, we finally, you know, EOC was deactivated, but actually during that day, we also had a water rescue in the river when the river was flowing approximately 40 miles an hour, the current was. There were two gentlemen working on a dock. They fell in the river and they were swept down the river past the high-rise bridge. That's our presentation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Good job. Well done.
You know, one of the important things in any event is to make sure that we're communicating with the public. As we recognize, as long as electricity is on and as long as telephones are working, whether cellphone are normal, communications work pretty well. What we know, though, is that's not what happened during the storm. And I'd best Glenn to give an overview of the tremendous effort that the city gave regarding outreach. Please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're going to talk a little bit about what we did and some of the philosophies that were there. Pre-storm messaging actually began a little bit the week before with some preparatory videos that have been in the can, so to speak, that we broke out. We started with messaging and social media about getting ready for storms like this. And of course, all of us know that we kind of, Monday, it was a real wake-up call about what this storm was going to be and everything to it. The mayor participated in a connect call that was made to all of our citizens. We obviously had the messaging live on G10 and such there and our social media, and we were fielding a significant amount of media calls at the time there, too. What we did was, we basically went to the Emergency Operations Center as our plan calls for, and we set up the vehicle and the parking lot. It became our kind of kitchen sink and the cabinet in the garage to get things out of when we needed them. Production equipment was set up at the Emergency Operations Center, and we have a fiber optic link that was streaming this live back into this building so we could get out to stream the signal 24/7 and to provide signal to G10. Now, in retrospect, we obviously had the Patriot Day Ceremony that morning at 8:15, and so a lot of things got done in that intervening time, and the clock seemed to just really be spinning that day as it was. One of our functions is to document what's going on, so a lot of the pictures that have been taken are those from media services and such there. And again, media calls significantly increased. Now, that fiber optic link let us go live from the Emergency Operations Center. We streamed this out. We were out on Facebook lives. We were out on our GT10TV.org. We were putting it out everywhere that we possibly could at that time through the means that we had as it was. But it did allow that to go in a fashion that here at the building, Alan Covey was here manning this fort and was keeping things up and operating and even fueled the generator and did things such as that in the eventuality of the matter. Now, looking back on that calendar, as the chief mentioned about the 3:00 PM with the mayor, that was put together quickly. We got people here. We went live. You can see the Kelsey and the, with her red hair there, and she was also broadcasting it live on JDNews.com. It was, the word was to getting out to talk about the evacuation that you were urging of residents, particularly those within the low-lying areas to get out. We put a flood map up on the monitor so that we could refer to that and show people where we anticipated inundation to be. Now, a key part of the operation is responding to citizens when they want to ask questions. And the way we do that is multiple. The principal way is the old-fashioned citizen phone bank. And we had a full setup that was over in the Emergency Operations Center and operated over there until basically the Monday after the storm. Then we moved it here to this room, as a matter of fact, with some special staff, many of whom are in this room now. We give appreciation for that. And obviously, on the 23rd, we kind of shut that down and we let our regular staff that handles our phone calls handle those questions. Now, a key part of that is so that everyone has the correct information. So we did these information sheets so that they could all have them. They also found information and shared it back with us from what the calls that were made, so we could make sure we were putting out a uniform and consistent message is what it was. We did 32 of those briefs over the period of time to keep that up. Now, this is what the emergency operations, the citizen phone bank looked like when we moved it here into this building. We were here on Saturdays and Sundays answering those calls and responding to the way the citizens are, thanks to ITS for setting up the phones and getting that stuff done, getting this connectivity in the room. Now, you'll see here, too, we also aggregated all this information on our website. We created this little hurricane recovery button because that's when we got a lot of the calls. Some of the calls during the storm were people who worried about that they hadn't evacuated. We did handle a number of calls that were passed into the emergency operations so they could respond to them in the appropriate manner, and that was taken care of it is. But afterwards, we had a higher volume about, you know, when you're going to pick this stuff up and, you know, what do I need to do? Where's their food? Where's their hot food? You know, when's the power coming back on? And those type of things as it was. So again, in our staffing, we had three at the Emergency Operations Center, a staff here at City Hall, and then we had one that was strategically placed off-site. She was at a site that had a generator and a different type of internet connection than what we had so that we could continue on communicating with the public so that everything go down here, that we had that message going. It is notable to see those numbers on the screen about the number of media calls that we took, and the mayor was on CNN and MSNBC and a bunch of places there. And we did six of the connect calls during the event, speaking directly to our citizens at the time. Those 17 live Facebooks and G10 feeds, they were very impressive. We got a lot of feedback on them. You can certainly see that number is an impressive number of people who watched them far beyond our borders of where we are here, the people who had evacuated, people who had interest here. We had a lot of people who had been stationed here and they wanted to know what was going on, and so they were watching those, too, as it was. But then separate from that, there were 128 different videos we produced and put out to make things happen there. The social posts, more than 100, and of course, the reach went over a million from all that aggregate of what was in that place at the time. Here are a couple samples of those as it was there. We had, we also did Twitter, Nextdoor, and we really went our full suite of what we had for social media. But you could see this was the surround of our live feed that we had, the nine o'clock brief that was on the 15th. And we were, we also did a textual summary of it for those that didn't want to watch the video or whatever there. Our stream was 24/7 with GT10TV.org, and it was, it was well-used. We have no way of knowing the actual aggregate of what it is, but we know it was, we got feedback from it. And this, this picture that, you know, obviously the chief spoke of, you know, this is where the team was out in the field getting these type of pictures and also getting them from the police that were out in the field, too, taking pictures for us as it was. And we were reporting to people, we were their eyes and ears for those that might not have it, about what was going on, about where trees were down, what was going on, what was happening at the base, things such as that. And then that wind, more than 50 hours of tropical force winds we experienced here in Jacksonville, it wore on people. It got on our nerves. It was, it was long and it was there. And so knowing what was happening and when it was happening and when this might end was also an important thing. And particularly after Verizon went down and then we had CenturyLink go down, and obviously the internet was out when Time Warner was out, and as it was there, all those things contributed. Now, Chris and his people, they still had us a route to the internet for much of what we were able to do, and that was keeping us, you know, able to post. In fact, you can see some of these posts were made by our off-site person with items that we had supplied so we could keep making those posts and getting things out, telling people what was going on with these water rescues and that you needed to stay put if you were not in danger and if you were, to get out at that time. So the power outages, we were sharing information as much as we could, and we got a lot of comments back about, about the services that had been provided and about questions that other people have. Because basically, Facebook is the new citizen phone bank. It is really the way people were communicating with us in addition to the phone calls and other things such as it was. We had many more inquiries that were made. This is out of Nextdoor, the social media Nextdoor. We cannot see all their comments because that's part of what the confidentiality is of Nextdoor, but as an agency, we can post so the entire city who has signed up for it can see our comments. But if they respond to us, we can obviously respond to them and go forth with that at the time there. And of course, afterwards, providing information about what was going on, where you could get hot food, when these debris trucks were going to be around to your place, and what we could do to help in that respect. So you can see that that was part of the messaging that was there. So in summary, we had to consider what was going to happen when normal communications fail. As mentioned, those landlines went down and CenturyLink went down. Cell phones, obviously, we had intermediate service, and at one point, we were able to make calls reliably. IT got us back up with a small cell they installed through a satellite link to get us, you know, connectivity. The internet was obviously when we had, knew that many of our citizens had no access to the internet. AM and FM radio, gone is the day when every AM and FM radio station has its own generator. That's no longer part of the emergency preparedness such as it was there, and so the airwaves were pretty silent for a lot of time there. We had proposed and have talked about that there might be some option that local government can get FM radio licenses, that you can use in the event of an emergency or some things because, you know, there's FM radios in people's cars and most people have some access to it, and you can go with it. It's fairly inexpensive, and it has it. It's also been explored about some community Wi-Fi that can be deployed or do something like that that can provide some connectivity for citizens and such like that. Much of the challenge of what we had to do was de-conflict information. Obviously, with different places, putting out different parts of information, evacuation orders were made differently. We were trying to slice that onion and make it so that we could let the citizens know what we were recommending and how that was different than what information they might be getting from other places there. We also learned about with the citizen phone bank that we're morphing into more to the social than into the dial seven digits and get this. And that's fine, and we are having to prepare for more staff to do something to that effect or the way we can do it. But we thought our greatest challenge that we did was provide some sort of window through the event, through social media, through what we did with G10, through those efforts there to let them know what their government was doing at that time and what things could be seen outside the window of our police cars, our fire and emergency services, all of those things out. So that's what our challenge was to do for. Thank you, sir. We enjoyed serving you folks.
Questions for Glenn?
No, just a great job. Part of it.
Thanks, Glenn.
Ryan is going to give us an overview of damage assessment.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good evening. So damage assessment, we began Monday following the storm. Danny Bryan and the building inspectors, along with representatives from Lilly's Group with Code Enforcement, as well as Chief Hayes's staff on the Fire Prevention Group, went out and observed the damage. I messed up. And with our partnership with Onslow County, we keyed the information into the ARM360 program, so it was pretty much live instantaneous as soon as the information was put in. This is a screen capture of some of the damage and different symbols, mainly houses and the amount of damage that each one sustained. And that auto-populates with the tax value information that's all filed with the Tax Office to determine and provide FEMA with a quick estimate on how much damage was done throughout the city. So the county had their crews doing, performing those inspections in the county, and our group did that here in the city. From that, we were able to very quickly produce reports on how much damage and how many buildings were inspected and the estimated losses. And once again, this is straight from that program with entering just a few simple pieces of information, and that hasn't been updated. That was just right after the storm. So that week after the storm where we did, we performed the damage assessment, these numbers haven't changed from that, even though there may be houses, as you'll see in a picture here in a moment, that from the street, the house looked perfectly fine, but the wind-driven rain found its way inside the house, and the ceilings had collapsed, and insulation was all over the floor, and the water damage was everywhere, even though driving down that road, we may have looked at it and said that was an unaffected structure, when really inside, it was a different, a different story. We saw that a lot, unfortunately. So during the storm event, you know, we monitored the stream levels and the creek, the river levels, and you'll notice there when we activated the EOC, you know, it was kind of going through its normal cycle. And then between Thursday and Friday, as the storm was going one direction, it actually went to a negative one thereabouts because of the offshore push. And then when the storm decided to go back south, it actually began the onshore flow. And for as slow as the river, the storm moved, you know, we felt that water just staying in Jacksonville, and then coupled with the heavy rainfall that followed that, it just kind of sandwiched together there, and that's why we had that peak amount of seven feet. And as you'll see here, that the yellow is moderate flooding and the red is even more severe flooding, and it peaked at 11:20 on Saturday night at 7.27 feet. And we got that information from the state's recently deployed river gauge that is now stationed on Phillips Bridge and actually deployed a second temporary unit, I guess for redundancy purposes, since we actually had two river gauges on the bridge for the storm event.
Popkin.
Uh, Popkin, sorry. So the, the amount of time that you see here where the river, you know, the water was in the yellow area or moderate flooding was 96 hours.
Of course, you know, that affects all the ditches in the city being able to drain, which then caused some of the localized flooding in the neighborhoods. That 96-hour period where it was slow draining from the city.
So for 87 hours, we had the river level was three feet or greater, and then for 75 hours, it was at four or greater. So on Court Street, right there about where the intersection of Ward Ole and Court Street is, if you were to stand on the road, you're sitting at about, you'd be standing at about three feet above sea level, so you'd be at least a foot of water at that moment. So this is a GIS image that we produced. This shows basically the houses that are in the flood zone are in blue, and then the area that's colored is different elevations of water based on ladder imagery. So you can see quite a bit of downtown was, at least had some water that, and we'll show you some aerial photos of that here in just a second, but only the houses that you see in blue are the only ones that are in the flood zone. So this was a picture that was taken from Laguna Bay overlooking Riverwalk Landing. This was a picture taken of Shoreline Drive. I'm unsure of the exact time that this picture was taken, but you can see Sturgeon City here in the background and, and then the duplexes that are the townhouses that are there on Shoreline that we'll talk about here in a moment as well. This was a NOAA image. This was taken a few days after the storm event that you can see the discoloration of the grass is basically where, you know, the mud was transported in the water and kind of settled out there. Let me hit that button again. Here's some drone footage that I believe Onslow County took. This, the images that you're going to see here were after about 18 inches of the river. It had subsided about 18 inches, so this is not at its peak. As you can see, the new courthouse building and the boardwalk along the river, Jacksonville Landing, the Kerr Street Marina, Riverwalk Marina. Once again, if you look at the, I guess it's not going to let me draw on it tonight, but basically, the water at its height went to about where the door handle is of that Riverwalk Marina, so you can see that it had already dropped 18 inches. The softball field, baseball field there at the park. Once again, the Shoreline Drive area. So this is a water line at the softball, baseball fields there at Kerr Street Park. So this is the type of things that, that staff and FEMA and people from the state, you know, that's where we go out and kind of measure where the water line was. We can also do that on some pictures I'll show you here in a minute with houses, windows, but it's pretty evident where the water was at its peak there at the field. So this picture is one that was taken on Bayview Drive. It had about a foot and a half in the laundry room, not in the house itself. And then I'm going to use this as an opportunity to make a plug for flood insurance. This house is not in a flood zone. And I don't know exactly the percentage, but there's an awful lot of houses that flood that are not looking. that are not located within a flood zone. So I use this as an opportunity to say, just because you're not required to have flood insurance, doesn't mean that you shouldn't consider having flood insurance. And this is an example of a home that had water damage that was not required to have flood insurance, as we've experienced with a lot of houses in Jacksonville with this event. Just another example in that same neighborhood where it's on a crawl space and there was about three to four inches of water in the house here. You can see they've already removed the carpet. Creek flooding right here at Onslow Drive, closest to Marine Boulevard. This is an example in, you can see pretty, this was basically two foot, two inches of water over near the library. So this is an example of, you can see here, you know, they've ripped out the sheetrock, the insulation, they've cut the sheetrock at about four feet. And this is in a flood zone. Unfortunately, this individual did not have flood insurance. So this is one of our customers that, one of our citizens that we're working with to determine, you know, what they can and cannot do moving forward based on the floodplain ordinances and where their house is elevation-wise. And that brings me to this slide because I think it's important for our residents and the mayor and council to understand that the floodplain ordinance that city council adopted in 2005 basically states that if you receive 50% damage, you then have to gain compliance. And in some cases, that means you have to elevate your home. Now this is only if you're in a flood zone. This isn't everybody. This is only for those that are in a flood zone. The other caveat to this is that if you have two storms within a 10-year period where the damage is averaged at 25%, you have to bring it into compliance. So if we have another flood event in five years, six years from now, and the two storms together average more than 25% damage, they're going to have to fix their home with the next storm. So we are advising all of our citizens when they're making these decisions to at least factor that in so that you determine whether you go left or right. So at least you make the best decision and that way this doesn't surprise them later on.
We're required to adopt the flood damage prevention ordinance in order for this community to participate in the federal flood insurance program. I mean, the details of the ordinance are to a degree dictated by the federal program. So this is not something where you as a council could say, well, we're going to change it from 50% down to 10% or you're going to change it from 10 years to 20 years. Now, these are guidelines that are mandated, so I guess they're not really guidelines, that come from the federal program. But again, this, in order to have the flood insurance program available to the citizens in Jacksonville, this is a mandate. But as Ryan said, while certainly my wife and I do not live in the flood zone, we do have flood insurance. A lot of people woke up after the storm wishing that they had flood insurance and they don't. And so whereas Ryan said, we hope that a lot of citizens in Jacksonville will think seriously about this storm and ask, how long are you going to live in your structure and are you going to be ready for the next storm? And should you in fact be buying flood insurance even though you may not be in the flood zone?
And one other thing, and I'd be remiss if I didn't point this out, but I actually remember this call being dispatched when Chief Harson and all the first responders, we actually performed a water rescue at this house during the event. So this is an example, I mean, the red line basically is where your elevation is for your, for your flood, which downtown along Shoreline is a four-foot line. We require a three-foot of freeboard on top of that. So if the ground's at four, you got to be at seven. So the house would be three feet off the ground. New flood maps, once again, we know that they're showing 10 in the downtown area. We would require them to be 13, which would roughly be nine, nine or 10 feet off the ground in most places. Some elevations are higher and that's why they get surveyors involved to perform elevation certificates to identify what their elevation is. Here's some just general damage pictures. This is one of those scenarios where driving down the road, you would have never guessed that this is the nightmare that was inside. And I think a lot of our residents did evacuate Jacksonville and this is what they came home to, you know, when they made it back into town. This is a large tree, this over in the Northwoods Brookview Drive area. I remember going by this home when they were removing it with a crane. We had several of those large trees where it took a crane to minimize the damage to the structure. Once again, this was, I think, this was on the main page of our, on the city's webpage. Once again, this is another one of those calls during the height of the storm that our first responders went to. There were people in this house during the event. So this, you know, kudos to Chief Harson and all those men and women that went out there, you know, when the winds were blowing and, and power lines and trees were down everywhere. Chief and I, we drove around Northwoods in this area, you know, after the storm passed and we, we really couldn't, we couldn't find our way around there. And yet our first responders found a way at night, you know, to go render assistance to these, this family that lived here.
So that's on Henderson Drive, right?
No, sir, that is on Decatur, right near Northwoods Park Middle School.
What I would like to point out, if you notice the siding on the house, there is no siding on the house. The siding was peeled. Now, I know the city from time to time gets criticized by many people for the fact that we require building code inspections. And here's a case where, you know, we cannot mandate what you build your house out of. But you can see that the wind, and again, it was a category one storm for us, but the wind simply peeled all of the siding right off. That's why again, having good building codes and requiring inspections is essential. You will find that a lot of homes throughout this part of the state were severely damaged because the roof blew off. And one of the reasons why the roof blew off is that the plywood was installed with an air nailer. An air nailer is what you hear. Does it get the sound right?
It's pretty good.
Pretty good. Okay. The point being, if you have half-inch plywood and you have the pressure turned up too high, it drives that nail through the plywood where only maybe a 32nd is actually holding. Why do we get inspectors up on roofs to look at the nailing system? So that if it is driven too far, we make them come back and redo it. Sure, it's a pain in the neck for the homeowner, it's a pain in the neck for the builder, but if you don't have it installed correctly, it's just like shingles. You can put down, you know, 10-pound felt if you want. We don't recommend that. Unfortunately, our building code cannot require a 30-pound. But when it comes to losing your shingles, would you rather have just a little thin piece that's going to hold the water out or have something that has substance? These are the type of things that every state that has gone through a major storm has gone back and evaluated their building codes. We hope that the state of North Carolina will do a similar thing, not to drive up the cost of building, but to drive down the cost of recovery.
So obviously this is a little bit more severe, but one of the things as far as the building inspectors go, one of our priorities after the storm, which led to us working, I think, the first two or three weekends following the storm was, you'd have a tree or branch like this that would basically rip off the power connection at the meter base. And our priority after the storm was, let's get power turned back on. So they'd have to have an electrician go out there and redo that and we would go out there and re-inspect it so they could get power turned back on. And we performed inspections over the weekend, I mean, following the storms to provide that service so that our citizens could get power turned back on. There were some exceptions. We'll talk about that here in a moment, but if there was no flood damage, you know, we were able to do that.
Before you leave that point, I'd also like to remind the public that the mayor and council unanimously endorsed the waiver of building permits relative to storm recovery damage.
Permit fees.
The permit fees, not the permit, thank you, but the fees. On tonight's agenda, there is another, there is an item that will extend that through March 31st. Now, the state has also a fee that is charged, but their fee is only waived through December 31st?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a $10 home recovery fee when applicable. So it's not on every permit, it's just on certain ones, like building a new home.
Right. But again, while we are collecting permit fees for brand-new construction, anyone who is repairing their home, we are currently waiving that inspection fee. You still have to get a permit. And assuming council will give the affirmative this evening, that program will continue now through the March 31, 2019 date.
So just continuing on a lot of shingle damage, some fascia damage. This is actually a new menu board. Unfortunately, it, the bolt sheared or something happened, it could have been an installation issue, not sure, but I mean, that was a new, that was a new one.
Sign held up real well, just a bracket gave there.
Of course, that may have been by design though, you know. So this was a garage. This is fairly close to city hall. Once again, another sign, we had several signs where, were damaged. And this is a house over in the Commons and, you know, this kind of sums it up, trees down and, you know, the roof, you know, the shingles and that 10-pound felt that Richard was alluding to a second ago is, you know, sheared off, peeled off. This is on Shoreline Drive. This is actually, these houses, as you'll see, they have garages underneath, they're elevated. And the reason why is the flood ordinance required them to be elevated, so no living space on the downstairs. You can see right here, that's the water line. You can see where the mud line is. Once again, these units elevated, living space above, not living space on the bottom. The flood zone's also delineated here in the black crosshatching. And as you can see, the waterfront homes are in a flood zone, but the townhouses on Shoreline Drive are outside of the flood zone. So anything in here has to comply with the ordinance. Everything here, they could build on the ground and there's not anything the city could do to tell them that you can't do that. Now, we would certainly recommend, based on the new flood maps that we've seen, that they should consider those new flood maps because later on, if they, you know, once they're adopted under whatever height that may be after our appeals, you know, determined with FEMA, you know, it's likely going to be in a flood zone even if it is at a lower So here's some pictures of the shoreline. You can see the siding, like the other homes we talked about. So the siding is ripped off and the insulation underneath, which allowed water to enter this dwelling unit, not just at the bottom from river water, but also from the roof or the sides. That's another thing we've had a lot of people say, well, my house flooded. Well, we've looked at flooding two different ways. Flooding as in the water was rising from the creek or the river or water from the ceiling and water inundation. And in some cases, you have both. And with the floodplain ordinance, if you had both, it's that cumulative damage of both flood damage, but also the wind-driven rain damage. And if you exceed 50% of both of those, you've got to bring your house into compliance if you are in a flood zone.
I thought this picture showed some innovation. If you look at the unit on the right, they went to the local hardware store and bought plywood. If you look at the picture on the left, they found some pallets and used those to protect the windows. Now, unfortunately, the unit was substantially damaged for other reasons, but isn't it amazing how in a crisis, people can really think out of the box and come up with some innovative ways to give some protection?
And speaking of shoreline, we've got a couple of different things. We've got several units that are, I think there's two buildings that are three stories. So you have an extra layer of living space with a garage on the downstairs, like you see on the left side of the screen. And on the right-hand side, this is living space down here. So the kitchen and the living room, you know, had 18, 24 inches of water inside of it. Whereas on this side, you know, if, now it's been enclosed, but some of the units have a garage downstairs, not as bad as, you know, if there was living space. So, so some assessments of the Shoreline Drive on the townhouse side was, you know, obviously the area was impacted by floodwaters. The state sent there a group that we refer to as the D-Cert team, and they actually did the damage assessment for the Shoreline Drive area. And we posted the houses, but we'd never condemned the houses. City of Jacksonville, we notified Duke on the 19th that the power should be withheld at the 36 units because of the water damage to give us an opportunity to get in there and perform inspections. And that email was sent in the afternoon on the 19th. Duke restored power to that unit about 7:30 that evening on Shoreline. And at about 10 o'clock that evening, they reacted to our earlier request to not energize those units and turn the power off. I know that that was a question that came up with, well, we had power and then you turned it off. Well, we actually requested that it not be turned on to begin with and that's why it was turned back off. But we actually made that request before because we tried to get Duke to do that before they energized it because we knew that there was damage to some receptacles that needed to be evaluated. Once again, one of the biggest things that we're concerned about is life safety. We don't want anybody to get, find themselves in an unsafe situation and we, it was imperative that we have that electrical looked at. Once again, on the Shoreline Drive on the north side, the flood ordinance is not applicable, even though we know that they're proposed to be in a flood zone with the preliminary maps. Danny and the residents here, they worked through methods for restoring power. I think most people have gone through that process now where, you know, they've applied for electrical permits and they've called us out for an inspection. In some cases, we've got, and I've got an example of that here in a second, you know, the electricians, I believe, were pretty busy after this event. And there was some time between when the permit was issued, normally the same day as it was applied for, and when the actual inspection was able to take place. One of the biggest hangups is between each one of those units, and I've got a diagram of this here in a second, there's a firewall, a two-hour firewall between units A and B and B and C and C and D. And, you know, the integrity of that firewall, you know, it's got to main, it's got to be maintained. And we also have to get the wall remediation to take place. And some people have had the wall removed and we're dealing with different pieces of that depending on which unit you live in. And in some cases, from what I understand, there's some units that haven't even touched anything inside the unit. There's still sheetrock with mold going on the inside because they've not gone in there and removed it. Some people have gone in and removed all of it. I've got some pictures of that here in a second as well. But that, to replace the firewall, if it's removed, it requires a design professional and architect or an engineer. And reminder that permits may be required for anything, or permits may be required depending on what you're doing, but without a doubt, a permit's required anytime the damage is 15,000 or more. So 92 Shoreline Drive, this is an example of one of the units, an electric permit was submitted on the third. The permit was approved the next day. I don't, I don't have when the electrical was turned back on, but on the 15th, the authorization of it was submitted and approved. And on the 17th, we've performed our first inspections on the sheathing. And on 10/22, the building wall insulation inspected and approved. And the electrical final was requested on the 22nd. We could not approve that because we needed information from the mitigation contractor and we're still working through the party wall issues. We think we're close with one design, an engineer. He hasn't, he's yet to respond, hasn't he?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've reviewed it and there's a couple of pieces of information that they've gotten to turn back in. And then we met with a group today that believes they've found a solution that we're going to refer to as an encapsulation method, which would allow the fire, the party wall to remain and they would just basically clean and treat and coat with a coating. And we believe that, or we think that's an opportunity that exists for repairing these units. And there could be other methods. You know, you've got lots of general contractors, you've got different engineers, they may have different ways that they would propose to fix this. As long as it meets code, they present it to us, you know, and it comes with that engineered seal and it meets the state building code, those are things that we can consider. So while we may have two opportunities and two options today, there may be others that are out there, they just haven't been presented today. Another saying, another example was 78. The electrical permit was approved on the 9th. Danny and I, we actually went to this unit ourselves on the 23rd, on the 23rd, and the electrician didn't call for an inspection until the 30th. You know, we were, we stood ready, we worked on the weekends, we were ready to get back out there, but for whatever reason, between the 9th and the 30th, you know, the electrician was doing other jobs. So to talk about the party wall issue, if you see in the bottom left-hand So to talk about the party wall issue, if you see in the bottom left-hand corner, you know, it's a two-hour firewall. The idea behind it is if you have a fire in your unit, we don't want the units, and the building code doesn't want the units on either side to be damaged or destroyed. So the integrity of that wall is paramount. And you can see on the right-hand side during construction, that purple area, that's the firewall, the gypsum board. And then that's basically, there's an airspace in between that. You can see that with this diagram here. There's actually a one-inch airspace between the units. And, you know, we know that there could be water and moisture inside that area. And we've been working through how to deal with the fact that there could be mold and mildew growing inside that wall. And we believe the encapsulation method, or the removal and replacement, you know, is a way to kind of deal with that. Once again, here's a three-story unit. This is, this is a part where the firewall has not been removed. And here's a section where the firewall was removed. So our dilemma here in this particular example is how do you get the sheet rock back in between that space and applied and installed per the building code? And we believe that there's a way to do that. We believe it's close with the design that we've been provided by an engineer. And then it's just a matter of, you know, executing that. You do have staircases that lead up to the upper floors in these units. So you know, that is going to, you know, create a challenge in that area where that firewall's got to be put back and how that's done. So this is basically looking from one unit into, you know, at the water heater of your neighbor's unit. And keep in mind, the idea behind this firewall is that if a fire were to happen because of the car parked in the garage, it would spread up that wall, you know, and we're worried about the life safety of those in that unit and also the adjoiningers. And that sums up the damage assessment portion. And we'll be happy to try to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have.
Questions?
Thank you. I think given the hour, what we may want to do in the control room, let's move to the discussion with the FEMA officials who are here out of courtesy to them, because obviously, staff may have more flexibility. I'm not sure where that is in the program. So if you're in the control room, would you bring up the section? It looks like they brought it up? It looks good. At this time, we'd like to ask the FEMA folks to come up. We need, we may need to move some extra chairs up. So would you like to come up?
Actually, they're, of course, they're not going to talk about the mitigation program. They're going to talk about the FEMA support overall and what's been provided. And we'll talk a little bit about the-
Do we have slides for them, or is this just for-
No, no, they're, you know, we'll talk more specifically about what the FEMA hazard mitigation program is.
Okay. So at this time, let's, let's welcome the FEMA folks up.
We've got Angela Byrd, who is a public information officer with FEMA. We have Yampu Gantaya, who may have not pronounced that right, who is our government liaison. And we have Himal Rodriguez, who's a Small Business Administration representative. And they're going to, you know, Angela and Himal will give us a summary of support that FEMA has provided to the area and answer any questions that we might have.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for inviting us to attend your meeting. My name is Angela Byrd. I am a media relations specialist for FEMA. I've been in North Carolina since September 14th. So I was here, I walked into a deserted Raleigh Durham airport. I was just thinking, where is everybody? And I walked in, I'm like, of course, it's a storm brewing. And so, and from there was Raleigh, and then for a few days, and then moved on to Greenville. Was there for maybe a couple of days. And then since that, I've been in New Bern, covering Craven County, Carteret, and Pamlico, and then inherit Onslow County just a couple of weeks ago. So I am getting up to speed with Onslow County, with Jacksonville. But all in all, in general, you know, when you have people that have been impacted by Hurricane Florence, and I have to say, I have been out getting media coverage for, for example, disaster survivor assistance teams. I was with them and had reporters covering them as they would go door-to-door neighborhoods, pretty much devastated. I took plenty of pictures of the devastation. And, and I could tell when I would report about it, that, and I can feel it now, I would, I feel myself breaking down. So even though, yes, I'm FEMA, yes, I'm a spokesperson, but it, to just see communities coming together despite all the devastation, when you see piles of debris in front of people's homes. But our disaster survivor assistance teams were going door-to-door, making sure that people had the opportunity to register for assistance. Some may not have been able to call. They may not have been able to go to a disaster recovery center. But they were out there every single day. And sometimes they would go into neighborhoods, start with cars. So I didn't witness this much in Onslow, but I did in the other counties that I'm assigned to. So with that, and I'm going to read something. And it was just something that was covered about making sure that you have flood insurance. If you live where it rains, you live where it can flood. If you live in Onslow County, you need flood insurance. If you live in the city of Jacksonville, you need flood insurance. So it is important because we don't know if another hurricane is going to happen again. It seems to be trending. It's disasters going on everywhere, not just here, but internationally. And, you know, it is important to be protected. That's like your first line of defense when you're preparing for a disaster. And when you go through the process, you know, especially if someone is, you know, greatly impacted by the storm, they're looking at their property, you know, they're distressed. The first thing to do is to make sure that you do file a claim with your insurance company. That's the first step in the process. You file with your insurance company, or if you have flood insurance, you do that. Then you come with that information when you want to reach out to FEMA. For those that don't have insurance, of course, we want you to reach out to FEMA right away. And the steps that you do to make that happen for you is to, you can apply at our website, at disastersistance.gov. You can apply at our 800 number, which is 1-800-621-3362. Or you could go to a nearby disaster recovery center and apply for assistance in person. So we still have people, believe it or not, still registering for assistance. The registration deadline originally was set at November 13th. The state requested an extension, FEMA granted it for December 13th. So for those that, you know, haven't really assessed the damage of your property, if you could share with your citizens to make sure that they do so, so that they can meet that deadline by December 13th. We are here to help, and we want people to reach out to us. I know that, I hear mixed, yeah, I'm upset with FEMA, or I love FEMA. So get that, I think most generally, even in neighborhoods that I've walked through with reporters, most people were very happy to see us. So that's a good feeling. But at the same time, we do want to make sure that people know that we're here, and we're still here. For, and, you know, we do have disaster recovery centers that are closing, but they're not closing at a fast pace. We're, we're, have disaster recovery centers in areas that have the greatest need. But we do have the 800 number on our website. So as of tonight, for the state of North Carolina, when you look at total state and federal funds, we've surpassed 900 million. 900 million for the state. For Onslow County, we've reached over 60 million. I mean, that's just a, you know, but it's still, still impactful, especially from the slides that we saw. The damage that's been done, impacting over 3,000 homeowners. I think I have that, let me make sure I have that right?
Yes.
Over 3,200 homeowners here that have received grants, which total over 10,000, 10 million, sorry, I was going to say 10,000, 10 million. So I, I just can't stress enough that you make sure that your citizens know, make sure your residents know, to please, if they have not registered for assistance, please share with them, don't be reluctant, please do so. We don't know when the next disaster may happen. We don't. And your residents need to be prepared. And I just want to make sure too, that for those that, you know, have received letters, determination letters. It could be some of you in here. If you received what you may consider a no, I want to make sure that you share with your residents, don't rip up the letter and get disgusted. Read the contents of that determination letter very carefully. It could be some missing information. It could have been questions that may not have been answered properly, or it could be documents needed. When in doubt, don't throw it away. And we do have an appeal process, so that first no may not be a second no. So make sure that when, when your residents are receiving a determination letter that tells them no, make sure that they're reading the contents very, very carefully. Any questions, any clarifications, they can reach out to us at the 800 number. They can visit a nearby disaster recovery center. There's one in Onslow County at Piney Green Shopping Center. They can visit and speak to a representative there. So I just want to make sure that, you know, again, to really let your residents know we are here to help. Hope I didn't miss anything, because there's so much information.
Yampu, you've done a great job of providing data sheets. Any specific additional data or comments you'd like to add to the council?
I know that you, Ron requested figures and numbers pertinent to Jacksonville. And we're currently working to get that approved. Once I get that fact sheet, I'll provide it to Ron and the rest of the council.
Well, you're to be commended for all the fact sheets and the great data that you have provided. And that's been good information. Now, from an SBA standpoint, Ms. Rodriguez, normally SBA is only Small Business Administration. But let's remind the public that SBA and a major disaster has a little broader reach.
Correct.
So can you talk about that?
Well, yeah, when it comes to disaster, this is the only time our long-term low-interest rate programs are available for homeowners and renters. Now, many people don't understand why they need to apply for an SBA loan. They just go, I want my, I want FEMA money. I'm the one, I only want to get that money, I want to apply the loan. The difference is that through the SBA loan, survivors can at least become whole again. I mean, they can recover what they lost. They're not going to just replace it, just recover what they lost, what they have worked for, what they have worked for. Just put it that way, what they have worked so hard for to get back. I mean, I'm going to give you a little bit of numbers here. I know the deputy city here, Massie, wanted for the city. Fortunately, I don't have those, I may work a little bit to see if I can find this. But I'm going to give you an example. Today, for the state, we passed the $300 million, the money approved for loans. I can tell you that for homeowners, it's 267 million, 230,000, $1,400 for homeowners. For businesses, it's 29 million, 577,000. And for businesses that have applied for economic injury loans, it's 5 million, 436,500 dollars. This is for the entire state. Now, the last numbers I got at least for Onslow County, so we'll take all the towns and the city, there's about 33 million, 535,800 dollars approved just for Onslow County. I can tell you that at least 13,000 plus have been FEMA referrals to us. And that constituted at least about 29 million, 674,600 dollars approved for homeowners and renters. Businesses have received over $3 million, and for economic injury, almost half a million. I mean, we provide this loan, this money for loans so that people can come back. And especially for homeowners and renters, when they have their property, they sometimes are a little frustrated and they've lost everything. And this is how they can get it back. I mean, the SBA loan can provide them those funds. Angela said something very clear. First, they need to look at their insurance before they can, they can register. With SBA, they don't have to wait until their insurance claim or insurance company tells them that how much they're going to pay. They come directly and apply with us, once they have registered with FEMA, and they get a letter that says to them, you can come to SBA, we can approve you for the loan. Why? Because once that insurance claim money comes in, that money that they receive is going to go in and pay the balance of the primary debt of the loan. It's not that they're going to lose their insurance money. Some people think that, well, why do I have to pay my insurance money for us? You're, the same thing, that you're claiming your insurance, you're claiming it to us. Not only that, you're also claiming your uninsured property. That personal property that sometimes is not covered by insurance, you're going to apply for it with us as well. That's why I'm telling you that the loan is designed to make you whole again. Get back to that state that you were before, unfortunately, that disaster came. Now, it was touched before with your disaster presentation that you made, Angela touched it. We do, when we say don't want any insurance, but we still also require you to have an insurance, especially flood insurance, if you're going to apply with us and you live in a flood zone. It's to help you protect yourself and protect us. Remember, this is a loan, and it's federal money. It needs to be, it's a debt, that will have to be paid.
May I interrupt you just a moment?
Yes, sir.
What are usually the, generally the conditions of these loans as far as repayment?
The terms are, they could be up to 30 years. The lowest interest rate right now for homeowners or renters is at 2%, 2%. The 30 years is, the loan is designed so that you do not have to dip too much into your own money. It's the long term, is so that you can have time, enough time for you to recuperate and be able to pay that money. We even provide you an 11-month to 12-month, 11-month deferment time before you make your first payment. You'll be able to make your first payment at the 12 months, almost a year. Why? Because we know that materials are a little bit hard to come by once a disaster. Contractors are also a little bit hard to find. And if you're able to do the repairs yourself, then you have a little advantage over some of the folks. But we know that contractors are very busy, they're not many to come by. So we can provide you that deferment period before you make your first payment. Something that most people don't understand, and they think it happens because rumors fly around, the interest rate is fixed. Once we decide to approve your loan, if you're approved at a 2%, it's going to be 2% on the remainder of time that you pay that loan. Not only that, you will not pay interest on money that we do not provide you. What I'm saying is that, for example, like I mentioned with the insurance, you may have just received your insurance claim. Might have not been enough for you to continue with your repairs. You can come to us, you can say, well, my insurance already paid me. Through all the, because of the disaster, I'm still outside of the money that I need. Can you provide me with the funds necessary for, in that loan, for me to finish my repairs? They can go ahead and they can look at it, and they can decide, well, we can approve everything, or we can approve the rest of the money that you're still looking for. Something also that I find that people help, through mitigation, so they were talking, those homes, there are those that need to be elevated. That's to prevent flooding in future disasters. Through our mitigation program, we can provide you the funds to do so. And we have already provided you the loan. If you need more money for mitigation purposes, we can provide you up to 20% more on the amount that we gave you. So for mitigation process. I mean, most businesses know about our programs. They know about the SBA district programs for businesses and small businesses, medium-sized, our disaster program. But homeowners are the ones that actually don't understand why. This is the reason why we come in, is we are one of the largest available funds when it comes to disaster assistance. We're not only coming with FEMA when a- We're not only coming with, with FEMA when a presidential declaration is made, we have also agency declarations for disaster, that if you find yourselves in a situation where flooding has, has come, and it's not a disaster of this type, you can actually go to the Office of Disaster Assistance for SBA and tell them we have this problem, can we have an agency declaration, and we can come in and provide funds as well. Right now, we're, we're talking about, SBA is covering all the, there's about 56 counties that were completely in this disaster, 35 are available for physical damages and economic injuries. There's 25 continuous counties for the state that are available for economic injury, even five counties in South Carolina that are continuous to North Carolina. We come in with FEMA when it comes to this type of disaster, we assess, and we try and make folks understand the reason why it's so important for them to apply. Not only that, it's part of the process, I mean, you vote. Sometimes they, they think, well, I got that fortunate denial letter, when you used to, that word, and it says to them that, I don't like using it, I don't like using it as well, but in that letter will be the determinations why you were not qualified for the FEMA, and it will also tell you that you qualify for an SBA loan. Go and apply for the loan, find out if the loan is right for you. Not only that, if the loan, if you're not approved for the loan, because you have registered first with FEMA, we can then refer you back to FEMA to find out what other types of programs you may be eligible for. And sometimes people, survivors, don't come into SBA and apply, and we cannot forward them back again to FEMA, and they stay stuck in this kind of limbo, when they go into the DRC and find out what's going on with my, with my claim, and they tell them, well, you need, did you went to the SBA, did you apply for the SBA loan? And they say, no, I didn't. Go and apply, let them see if you qualify or not, and then they can bring you back to us. We also, the loan also offers relocation, I mean, if for any reason the business needs to relocate, either because it's, the building has been completely destroyed, they cannot operate in, in where they're located, they can ask for relocation funds. Homeowners and renters can do the same as well. They can come to us, I'm fixing my home, unfortunately, I cannot live in it, can you guys provide me along with the loan to, so that I can relocate in the time being? And FEMA also has a relocation assistance program, right Angela? Like them, we can provide you with the funds through the loan as well. Like I said earlier, the loan is designed to help get them home, or at least put them in the right direction to, to that state again. Anybody have any questions?
Well, before they, before they complete, I would like to take a moment to talk about the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Program, because this is where, you know, the, the SBA and FEMA and your insurance are designed to help you get to a certain point. And I want to stress to everybody again, if, if you are sitting and waiting, the time is coming, you've got to act, because I believe you said December 13th is the deadline.
And for SBA, SBA, SBA when it comes to physical damages, we follow FEMA's lead, if FEMA decides the deadline, we do the same thing, because we're exactly for homeowners and renters, since they're registering, they're registering, they need to do the same thing with us. Now, for businesses that are looking for economic injury loans, they still have until June 14 of 2019 to apply.
But for, for most people who are listening tonight, if you have not applied for an SBA loan or FEMA assistance, you must apply by December 13th, or that program closes for you.
Correct.
Now, let's talk a second about the Hazard Mitigation Program. It is set up with federal regulations, it is voluntary participation. I don't want anybody who is out there in TV land or here tonight, this is not a city mandated program. The city must agree to participate though, in order for this program to move forward. From one standpoint, the mitigation program, while it does have the ability to give you funds to raise your unit, I'm primarily going to focus on purchase, and why is that? Out of the 30 to 40 units that are in Shoreline, we have now had six individuals contact the city saying, we want to sell our land, our program to FEMA. So I'm going to talk specifically about purchasing. This is not eminent domain. Eminent domain is where the government comes in and says, we're taking your property. This is where you, as a property owner, want out. The city's not forcing you out, FEMA's not forcing you out, you have decided on your own that you want out of that property. So, the purchases are at the request of the property owner. Here are the factors. Is there sufficient federal money available? We can tell you that for Matthew, there are over 3,000 claims just up in the Kinston area, and they've only processed Ron 800 of them.
And that was, yeah, one of the, yes.
So just because you want out, doesn't mean, if you pardon the blunt, is you're going to get out. Federal funds have to be available. Secondly, eligibility. Third is cost effectiveness, and fourth is the priority of the purchase. Let's look at the steps. The first step is that the property owner has to request the program. We believe tonight, as your staff, that with six people who have come forward and said, we are asking the city to begin the process, that there is interest on the part of the private property owners to begin the process. So step one, we believe is currently occurring. If you're interested in being part of the program, we need a letter, some documentation from you that says, City of Jacksonville, send it to the mayor, send it to the city attorney, but you need to-
There's actually an application.
Which we'll discuss next Thursday night. Step two is local government coordination. Now, step two also includes what we're asking you as a council to do tonight, and that's to authorize us to participate in the program. So, in the interest of time, I'll ask you right now, well, I'll ask at the end of step seven. Step three, local government and state determine the eligibility, cost effectiveness, and priority. Why is that? Because FEMA works through the state emergency management agency on this program. Step four, once you have been determined relative to eligibility, cost effectiveness, and priority, then appraisals are conducted. These are pre-storm appraisals. These are not, you know, the houses in damage as is, this is pre-storm appraisals. Title searches have to occur to make sure that you actually don't have any other liens on the property, or that you actually own the property. Number four, number five, the property is then acquired by FEMA and the state. It is then deed restricted for open space only forever, as in forever, okay? And then the property is demolished, and then the property is then transferred to the city. And I want to make sure everybody understands, the city's not in this program because we want your land. The only way that your land's going to be purchased is if you want it purchased, and the process says it should be purchased. However, FEMA does not want to wind up owning a vacant lot in Jacksonville. The state does not want to wind up owning a vacant lot in Jacksonville. So what they say is, city, if you agree to participate in the program, you are also agreeing that when this is over, the title of that property is going to come to the City of Jacksonville, and the City of Jacksonville are responsible for mowing it and maintaining it forever, only as open space. City can't go down there and build a building on it. It is open space.
Could we sell it to the neighbor with the condition?
No, sir.
I got a, I got a question.
We can't do it.
I got a question. Now, my understanding is that if it's owned, you have separate units, but they're on the same lot.
Let's, let's go back to, to number three. In Shoreline, Mayor, as, and that's the point you're making, almost every building has four units in it. One of the determinations of eligibility and cost effectiveness will be this. Let's say that you are, you are in a four-unit building, and you own the first unit, and the other three don't want to sell. I'm going to tell you right now, you're not going to be eligible, it's not going to be cost effective. Let's say that you're in units two and three, and you, one in four don't want to sell. Now, you will see later in the, in the last slides of the recommendations, which we probably won't get to tonight because of our other meeting, the city manager is saying to you, one of the conditions is going to be the whole building or none.
Or one, one floor.
You know, it's either everybody, because it is not, as you saw from Ryan's pictures and Danny's pictures, you can't buy one of those interior or exterior units.
And one of the property owners couldn't sell it to their neighbor.
Well, private people can sell if they want to. I mean, for example, I do know right now that there are people out there who are trying to buy these units from each other.
But not at a pre-appraisal?
But at whatever price, but that's totally private arms-length dealing, that's what we're talking about here, is federal money purchasing.
But you couldn't buy your neighbors, and you go apply for this program?
You could buy all four, sell all four.
And I'm saying you can't buy to try to sell it to them, to FEMA?
I don't know.
We don't know the answer to that one. We don't know the answer to that.
Well, I mean, if there's three, if there's three people that want to, and there's one that doesn't, then maybe if it was a possibility.
Well, that's why, over the next week, we're going to learn more and more, Ron's heading that up with John and with Ryan and Danny, so that a week away, when we have the meeting with the neighbors, we can answer as many questions as possible. But the main thing to understand is, the only way the program moves forward is with council authorizing it. The second way, totally voluntary, and third way, it's the whole building or none. John?
All I'll say is, under the best-case scenario, as I see it, if everybody qualifies, you're going to end up with what I'll call fingers out, just open space. Just say you take out one fourplex here, you've got folks here and here, they're going to have to do whatever they have to do. I mean, you're not going to end up with everything, because everybody's not going to be participating. So under the best-case scenario, if this were to work, you're going to end up with just open space here, maybe an open space here, and how, and quadruplex in between. I just want the council to realize that. But again, there's not a cost, as we understand the program to date, except for the future maintenance issue as far as mowing, et cetera, which again, it is adjacent to city-owned property.
It's also, it's a reimbursable program though, too. In other words, we're, we're going to end up having to buy the property and then get reimbursement from the state.
Now, at this point, because of the hour and the fact that we have the veterans' recognition tonight, I think the appropriate thing to do, because the rest of it is to cover damage to the city buildings, some issues that we've had with transportation, recommendations to the manager, we'll move that to the next workshop. But before we close, what I'd like to do is ask the FEMA folks, anything that we've said here on these steps, that we have misinterpreted your literature, I know you're working directly with Ron to really clarify a lot of these things for the meeting next week. Everybody?
I have no objections.
Okay.
See, there's a, there's a training session that the state, the state is managing this program. So there's a training session next week that we will attend, you know, to get more details, and then we will have that meeting with not only the residents of Shoreline, but others who may qualify and want to ask for the program. We expect this to be the first round. I've been told that their focus on this round is on acquisition, as opposed to elevation or mitigation. And again, it's all driven by availability of funds. They have some funds right now that are eligible or available for this purpose, but that's why they're going to go to the, the most pressing needs, and that's why this is an iterative process also. And then, hopefully, based on the assessment of the overall additional need, there'll be additional funds become available and that. But, one, we've got to say we're willing to participate, and we can't do that until we have applications from property owners. So, that's why we wanted to have this discussion. Do you want us to participate? Then, you know, we'll, we'll take actions, because the 7th of December is the date by which we have to send a letter to the state, you know, that we want to participate in the program.
John?
Two, two points. The first one is, and this is important for the Shoreline folks, from what we've learned so far, this program is not, is a two-year program, or so, it takes, it's not going to be a next-week-type program, it is a long period of time to go through the process. Number two, the first I heard, Ron needs to talk, explain to the council about the reimbursement. It sounded like to me he's saying the council has to fund the money, and then we get reimbursement from FEMA. If that's the case, you need to explain that to them, so they'll have that knowledge.
Well, that, that's what I've been told, what I've been told by the state, it's, it's a reimbursable program, you know, as they don't, FEMA's not buying the house per se, you know, in other words, they're processing, getting it, agreeing on the sale, and actually, I think we're going to complete the transaction, you know, and then get the reimbursement.
But I would also mention to you that you're not signing a blank check, because every one of these, every purchase has to be looked at on eligibility, cost effectiveness, and priority. Now, I will tell you, from what I've heard so far, I think that less than 20% of the units in Shoreline want to sell. On the other hand, when they start, they as the owner start seeing how much money it's going to cost to put these units back, you may wind up with 100% of them. And then, we're simply going to have to look at a priority. You do have some exposure here. What we're asking you to do tonight though, and I'll, I'll say it this way, you can stop your part in the program, in my opinion, anytime, because you can say, it's no longer cost effective. You know, we, you're asking us to put in $5 million or whatever, and we don't have $5 million.
That's what I was going to add. I, I have no problem with the program, but after Ron's comments, I attended a class at the NLC that's called Leading Through the Storm by Catholic Coach, who went through Katrina, and they just got their final payment.
From Katrina?
From Katrina, I mean, you're FEMA, no disrespect to FEMA. So, I think we need to be cognizant of that sort of reimbursement, and, you know, have the ability to, to do that. So, I will add that.
I got a question.
But if you, you're saying we can stop that at any time we feel that it's not-
When it comes to the point, you know, when it comes to the point, we, we have to report back to y'all, whether FEMA wants this or not, let me say it differently, I'm sure FEMA doesn't care whether we do it or not, whether FEMA requires it or not, as your staff, we're required always to report back to you the financial situations that we're in. So, if you participate in the program, we will keep you posted on a regular basis, every month, every council meeting, to say, at this point, we have two applications in, now we have 20 applications in. I mean, we're not going to process applications that bankrupt the city, we simply can't do that.
So let me ask you this, all right, cost effectiveness wise, say everybody, they participate, you know, some of them participate, and we're able to do that, what is the benefit to the city?
Well, there is, I'll be quite frank with you, Mayor, I'm not sure that there is a benefit to the city beyond the fact you're helping your citizens. And let me give you a little exposure. When this property goes to open space, it comes off the tax records.
Right.
So one thing I'm going to say to you is, if, if every one of these, I mean, you know, people down there will tell you, they do pay their taxes, they pay them proud, and they get good services for it. So if every unit down there is sold, the negative is they all come off the tax records.
Plus, we, we, we gain the responsibility.
The positive is, you have done something that your citizens have asked you to do to get them out of a disaster. And obviously, in my opinion, everybody has an opinion, one of the purposes of government is to help people when the ox is in the ditch. And so, you're, you're doing it because it's the right thing to do.
I want us to do the best thing, what's best for them.
Yes, sir. And I think, I think there's probably some risk too of just abandonment. We certainly don't want to have abandoned properties in our downtown area that are, you know-
You make a good point this way, if a property goes into bankruptcy, and let's say there's no, there's no mortgage on it, the person just simply says, you know, adios, adios meaning good luck. And then what happens? We wind up with code enforcement, we wind up with having to figure out, how do we destroy, how do we take down that middle unit? You know, I mean, it's a nightmare for the owner, and it's going to become a nightmare for the city.
We need to help them as much, you know, we can possibly, whatever way we can.
Right, sure, I agree.
See, another point about the Shoreline situation is knowing the preliminary flood maps, knowing that the preliminary flood maps raise the flood elevation, and knowing that we actually had a storm and proved that there is a risk. So you've got property that's been built, and it's, it's not going to be able to handle flooding- So you've got property that's been built and it's not going to be able to handle flooding, you know, multiple times.
All the two-story units, all the two-story units.
So for them to be able to buy flood insurance, say like if they rehab their property and everything, and the flood plain's going to change?
Yes.
Obviously. And what kind of expense would be involved in that?
And that's another good point. Because if you participate in the elevation and mitigation, you are mandated to buy flood insurance. If you buy flood insurance and you're in the flood zone, the pricing is much more expensive than when you're out of the flood.
But is it possible they might not be able to purchase flood insurance?
No, they'll be able to if they meet the flood plain requirement.
They'll be able to purchase, but will they be able to afford it?
Afford it.
That's two different...
We can't determine that.
Because it'll be about four times the year.
Anybody got anything else?
I have one other thing, and let's answer your question first. Okay, is there a deadline? Or what is the deadline for appeals from the date that you receive your letter?
Okay, it's, it should be 60 days. So you can appeal within the 60 days. I mean, there's not a set limit, but it will have to be within a 60-day window.
From the time you receive it.
Date on the letter, probably. Now, let me close the session from our standpoint. We've been very blessed that the FEMA, that the city contractor that is approved by FEMA has now collected over 300,000 cubic yards of material. Next workshop, Carrie and others are going to tell you about how we're doing. Here's the thing, there comes a point when that contractor's leaving town. Why? Because if we want the contractor to stay in town, it comes on your nickel, our nickel, not the FEMA nickel. Why? Because there's not enough productivity. They have reached that point. So we want everybody in the room, everybody in TV land, everybody everywhere in Jacksonville needs to understand this. If you do not have that material, horticultural material and debris out at the curb by Monday...
That's it.
Monday of this coming week, the Monday after Turkey Day, the Monday after Clemson beat South Carolina football, whatever day you want to say, folks, you've got until Monday. Because when that contractor goes through the last time, what happens then? It's on you, Rick. The free pickup ends next week.
Explain the pickup, too, that the $40 isn't just for picking it up. $40 is mostly for the landfill disposal.
Yes, now, the city, if, once you get into the city charging you or your insurance company paying for it, the bulk of that goes to the landfill because we pay per ton. And believe me, there's a lot of stuff out there that people need to, get out the family chainsaw, get out the family beaver, whatever you've got, you need to be cleaning up your yard. Because again, if it's not out there by this coming Monday, it doesn't count and it's now going to be in your pocketbook, not free. With that, I would like to thank the FEMA folks and SBA, you've done a fabulous job. I'd like to ask council to join me in a round of applause.
I got a special thank you for Yanpu and your team showing up at Sandy Run Apartments, because they lost 27 units out there. I really appreciate it because you all showed up right, right after, the day after I mentioned it, we talked, and you were there. And the folks from there, thank you for what you've done.
I'd like to do one other thing. I'd like to ask council to join me. These folks who lined the wall over here, they're the ones who have stood in the ditch and really stood tall over the landfill. And Mayor, we will pick up with their story in a decent...
Does council have any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?